Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Griswobiak.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower. Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item here, then let's do it. Adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. We have two items under National Public Works Week. Busy talking, forgot to open my iPad. First thing.
Under proclamations and presentations.
Proclamations and presentations. I have no idea what I said anymore, so we'll just let it go. And somehow, Public Works is reminding us how important they are. They came ahead of swearing in new police officers. So there, there's that. Let's see. Since 1960, the American Public Works Association, APWA, has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, more than 30,000 members in the United States and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of Public Works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating the infrastructure within our local communities. This year's theme, "Stronger Together," challenges our members and their citizens to think about the role Public Works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact citizens and Public Works professionals can have on their communities is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. Public Works helps maintain a community's strength by working together to provide an infrastructure of services in transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, togetherness needed, is that right? No, hang on, I skipped a line. Emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services. Council staff and the public are asked to recognize our Public Works staff for their hard work and contributions to the city of Coon Rapids. And to that end, we have a proclamation for Public Works Week. And we're going to start with, whereas, Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the health, comfort, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Coon Rapids. And, whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals responsible for building, improving, and maintaining our transportation, water supply, water treatment systems, public buildings, and other facilities essential for our citizens. And, whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the city of Coon Rapids to gain knowledge and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their community. And, whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the third full week of May as National Public Works Week in the city of Coon Rapids, and urge our citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association in paying tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life, proclaimed this fourth day of May, 2021. So we'll make sure that gets to the Public Works Department. And normally, we would be, we would be advocating for attending our Public Works Open House, but apparently we're not having one this year yet. Again, it's two years in a row we're going to miss it. 2022?
Yes, the plan will be to bring it back in, in '22. We are anticipating to do some videos and things this year, but you know, decision was made a couple of months ago to forego that for this year, and hopefully bring it back as normal next year.
Okay. Well, hopefully, when we have our meetings in the park this summer, we'll get some of the equipment out there and people can still get out and see what some of their tax money.
Correct, that's the plan, yeah.
All right. And, and just as a reminder, Chief, you probably remember from 2017, but you know why you were second tonight. Because, as the cornerstone of civilization Public Works provides, maintains, not even, that's, every, every year I have to reprint that from 2017, it was my favorite. And we are on to item two. One of our favorite things that we do here, swearing in of new police officers. Chief Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And hopefully, this will be the last swearing in where we have COVID restrictions. We're slowly progressing towards a version of normal, and we have a pretty good crowd here, but there were a lot of people that are very excited to see the badge pinning of these young people that are coming into our police department. It's a big deal for them and big deal for us, big deal for the community for that matter. All right, so, Mayor, per tradition, Mayor, Council, city staff, citizens of Coon Rapids, as the Coon Rapids Police Chief, I'd like to take a few minutes this evening to formally introduce our newest police officers, honoring their graduation from our field training program, which occurred amidst a pandemic that places this important ceremony in a bit of an unusual predicament. It is worthwhile that we do this as the relationship police officers have with our citizens is significant in that it serves as a foundation to our collective sense of safety and security, especially as we watch world events, is that I am almost emotional about it, the commitment that these young people are making to this city. This event is an important part of the process where new officers learn that they enjoy the unyielding support of their community and from their city council. Tonight, I am introducing Officers Greg Nordby, Tyler Sinclair, John Roth, and Sierra Peterson. Four is the most we've ever done at once, so this is quite a special night. First, I'd like to introduce, which closest to me, Greg Nordby. Greg Nordby is a lifelong Minnesotan who moved to Blaine at a young age. He graduated from Spring Lake Park High School and initially went to college to become a woodworker. He became interested in law enforcement, basically from his brother, who's a Blaine police officer, and he joined the Blaine Police Explorer Post. And frankly, that's the first time I met the Nordby brothers as an explorer advisor. That's a theme that's going to come up repeatedly as I do these introductions, because it's the, the way we get a chance to interact with young people, to get them interested in the profession and understand how honorable it can be when you're serving your community. He attended college at Metro State University, where he earned a Bachelor of Arts in Law Enforcement. He attended skills at Hennepin Technical College. Meanwhile, he became a community service officer in a couple other communities before landing a full-time law enforcement officer position with the city of Brooklyn Center. After more than seven years at Brooklyn Center, he decided he wanted to come to Coon Rapids. He still operates his woodworking business while working here, so, Nordby woodworking, if anybody's listening. That's actually kind of funny. That's my first commercial, I think. It probably violates the state statute, I would imagine. Whatever. All right, next, to his left would be Officer Tyler Sinclair. He was born in Indiana and moved to Minnesota at a young age with his family, settling in the Maple Grove area. He too became a police explorer, so again, that connection to our young people and progressed him into this profession. And he pursued a law enforcement degree, eventually earning a BS or Bachelor of Science in Law Enforcement from Metro State. He attended skills at Hennepin Technical and became a community service officer at Maple Grove. He was hired as a police officer in Big Lake and has been serving that community for the last three years, until he decided to make Coon Rapids his professional home. Again, another theme that I'm proud of for these people that, that recognize the professionalism of this department and want to become a part of it. Next to him, to his left, is Officer John Roth. John Roth was born and raised in Shoreview, Minnesota. He was someone who said he knew at a young age he wanted to be a police officer, as his father Frank had already worked at, as one. And his, actually, his father Frank is somebody that I know going back to the previous century when I started in police work.
That sounds so long ago.
I know. Sergeant, he was a sergeant at Brooklyn Center Police Department when I was a young officer in Robbinsdale. And, and I guess that theme of coming from someplace to here, in my case, I knew that Coon Rapids was my home department, and I was excited and thrilled to come to Coon Rapids from Robbinsdale. So anyway, that's how I got to know Frank Roth. John attended North Hennepin Community College, where he earned an Associate of Science in Law Enforcement. He attended skills at Hennepin Technical and became license-eligible. Meanwhile, he worked as a community service officer for Brooklyn Center since 2018, before joining our police department as a sworn police officer. And then to his left is Officer Sierra Peterson, who was born in Iowa and moved to Coon Rapids when she was 12. She too expressed interest in law enforcement at a young age, and also joined the Coon Rapids Police Explorer Program while in high school. And that was the time when I first got to know her, when she was teenager, young teenager. She graduated from Coon Rapids and attended North Hennepin Community College, where she earned an Associate of Science in Law Enforcement. She attended skills at Hennepin Technical College. Meanwhile, she too worked as a community service officer while in school. In, her, her first job as a community service officer was with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, but then she transitioned to work here, right here in Coon Rapids for being hired as a sworn officer. The common theme between all four of them was an interest when they were young. Secondarily, they were community service officers for extended period of time. And I know, and we jokingly call it dog-catching locksmith, to work as a community service officer, but the best part about that position is it teaches them the service. It teaches them, somebody calls 911, they need assistance, and they go there and they provide a service. And it's not about handcuffing, it's not about arresting, it's about my community needs me, and I'm there to help them. And it's a, it's a great foundation for them to build on as they become peace officers. So tonight, we're very happy to have Greg, Tyler, John, and Sierra become members of our department. These four have been in our training program for the last several months. Since that time, they have been trained and evaluated on a daily basis, pushed to excel at the meeting, the unique needs of our city here in Coon Rapids. Our training program is designed to be extremely stressful process, to be certain we've hired the right people that are ready to perform the vital job for Coon Rapids citizens in the Coon Rapids way. So in Greg, Tyler, John, and Sierra, we believe we have done just that, which leads us to where we are now. Greg, Tyler, John, and Sierra, tonight you are officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we removed your training badges, if you've now earned your permanent badges identifying you as Coon Rapids Police Officers 172, 173, 175, and 176, respectively. Two things about this badge. First, this badge represents the faith that many people have in you to perform this job. Lots of people have been involved in your training, lots of people have been committed to bringing out the best in you. They have faith in you, and they trust that you're ready to deliver. Second, and most importantly, is never forget this badge belongs to the citizens of Coon Rapids. They entrust you with it to do your very best each and every day while you're providing that service to them. So, now we're ready to, to move on. You've become members of a proud organization of dedicated professionals, and on behalf of that organization, I'm thrilled that we're here tonight. So for the first badge pinning, and Mr. Mayor, we're going to do this slightly differently. I'm going to have all four pinned by their individual person, and we'll have them all line up, and then I'll have you swear them in as a group, if you don't mind.
Whatever you want to do, Chief.
Excellent. So first, I'll have Greg step up and his wife Jane. So, Jane, come up.
That's it?
That's it? Sometimes it takes longer.
Next, Tyler Sinclair, and it'll be his fiancee Maddie. So, Tyler and.
No pressure, Maddie.
And next, we'll have John Roth and his dad Frank is going to be pinning him. I can't imagine the pride a father has for doing that. And last, and certainly not least, will be Sierra, and she will be pinned by her father Jonathan. So, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chief. So, it's unusual when we do all four at the same time, so we're going to do the aye, state your name, but you're going to say your name instead, okay? All right. If everybody would raise their right hand, and I'm going to kind of hold the mic in a general area over here.
So, I state your name.
I, Tyler Sinclair.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Of the United States and the Constitution of Minnesota.
There we go. And discharge faithfully the duties of a police officer.
And discharge faithfully the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
In the county of Anoka.
County of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
Well, that's nice making them item two. You stay for one of the, one of the items, anyway. All right, we are on agenda. Item three, to approve the minutes of the April 20th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2021. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next, we're looking to approve the minutes of the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization, April 27th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are approved. And I think this is the first time we've ever not had a consent agenda. It's impressive.
Mayor, Council, there likely would have been one item on there, but I applied the Demmer rule, which says that if there's one or fewer items on consent, you just put on new business. That was for you, Councilmember.
Wow, now, now you wonder if that'll be a legacy to follow, you know, oh, the Demmer rule.
It could be worse.
All right, we're looking at item five, then. To consider solicitor license denial appeal Comcast Xfinity. And Ms. Lenzmeyer, do you want me to just read the discussion point here, or do you want to cover it?
Mr. Mayor, I can give just a brief overview. As the memo notes, Mr. Zian requested a solicitor license to solicit business for Comcast Xfinity and did not disclose misdemeanor violations related to traffic. While those infractions are not real serious, the omission is what led to the denial, and so he has asked for an appeal. I don't see him in the room. He had said he would be here, but his letter is attached to the packet. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Ms. Lenzmeyer, if, if he would have disclosed, and it sounded like he had a pretty extensive traffic record, if he would have disclosed those, would we have had any reason to deny the license?
Mr. Mayor, if he had disclosed them, I would have reviewed them, maybe discussed them with the city attorney. He does have a valid driver's license, which would be my concern, and he has not had any infractions in the last two years, so I would have granted the license.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, did, does he have, have, or does not have a valid driver's license?
Councilmember Griswobiak, Mr. Mayor, he does have a valid driver's license.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't hear.
But to be three years after having that extensive, and then to be three years clear, that's, that's actually pretty impressive. I kind of wish he would have been here tonight. I'm not sure what to do. We've not had an appellate not show up, I don't think, have we?
Mr. Mayor, no, not in my tenure here. Maybe I should just step out in the lobby and make sure he's not last in the crowd. If you just give me a sec.
Or intimidated by 50 police officers?
Correct.
Otherwise, Mr. Brody, would it be reasonable to extend this, or, I mean, do we give him an opportunity? What do you, what do we do?
Your Honor, his opportunity was today. He has submitted a letter. I don't think it, you can, I mean, I think you can probably use his non-appearance as a factor, but you certainly can consider what he's written in his letter and the scenario and make a decision. That would be my recommendation.
And he referred to us as a noble counsel. I was impressed, you know? And he, and he jumped through the hoops, and he's got permission to work with Lyft, and, and they do some screening. I was kind of leaning towards, I was kind of leaning towards thinking it would be okay myself, but I don't know what, Council, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
I wasn't really that focused on offenses so much, seeing as they're three years old, but to me, it's pretty glaring to not note them when it was only three years ago, especially if there are misdemeanors in there. I know we're not privy to exactly what those violations were, but it's not like, it's not like an expired registration ticket that you forgot about. And the question, I've read through the form a few times, and it's very clear that it asks if you have ever been convicted of any traffic offenses. And, you know, three years ago, it's, it's very, it's very admirable that, that, that he's changed his driving conduct, but at the same time, it's hard to, hard to forget when it was only three years ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Have you ever been, ever been convicted of any traffic offense? No? And then actually, they just put the lines through the other three and say, nope, nope, no offenses?
It was my hopes, Mr. Mayor, to hear what he had to say. And if there was an honest mistake, or, or misreading, or misrepresentation, then that would be the great opportunity to hear that. But I'm a little concerned that he's not here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So maybe this is for Mr. Brody, or maybe even Chief Wise, and it may be kind of silly, but, so, could there have been any confusion with any of the traffic violations? Let's say it's potentially like a speeding ticket. If you just pay that fine, are you technically quote convicted? And could there have been a potential misunderstanding of what that term meant?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, of course, there could always be some confusion with that. There were misdemeanors. We asked the question both ways. Anything related to traffic and anything misdemeanor or higher? So.
But I'm, I'm just wondering, if, if you get a traffic ticket and you pay it, to me, some people may think a conviction means that you had to go before a judge, or, or have been tried for something. And, and that's where I think that there's potentially, I wanted to know, was there any violation or any way that there was no ambiguity on the word conviction?
Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, I, we were aware of the violations. I don't know specifically, and certainly, like, kind of driving after suspension, maybe this is kind of a good lesson. Theoretically, he could have been convicted by failing, just, or not necessarily convicted, but it would show by not even appearing in court or failing to pay his fines, what we call a payable offense. So I, I don't know if we can say one way or the other, whether he, you know, was in court, pled guilty, if he paid a fine over, you know, online, if he ignored it and was, and given notice that he had failed to appear. It could be any one of those things could have happened, given the number that he had. I think it could be presumed that he had some knowledge of these matters. And I would just point out in our code, it says that, you know, part of the license application is that we may deny a license based on their providing false information on the application, and that's why we're here. And so it's a may, not a shall.
And, and as a clarification, I don't know what Council's wishes are going to be. We'll either be upholding the denial or approving the appeal and, but if we uphold the denial, he literally could appeal it again next week, right? I mean, there's no, like, wait 30 days or something, is there?
Mr. Mayor, he could reapply. We'd go through the process again.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I mean, I, that latter aspect is what I'd rather have him do. I'd rather have him go through and, and reapply. And part of the reason I say that is, I don't, you know, if I'm reading the right letter that I have in here, it's pretty clear. It says not mentioning this in my application was because I assumed it was off my record, since they all occurred over three years ago. That shows, to me, a knowing omission, but maybe arguably based on a misunderstanding of fact. So let's clear the record, let him reapply, ask that he sit down with staff, and, and if he has any questions about anything in the application, the expectation is that he fully and completely answers all the questions in there. So I'm going to support the denial of this based on that. And candidly, if you're going to, I, I would have found it valuable had he been here today. So, thank you.
So, Councilmember Johnson, to clarify, was that a motion to uphold the denial?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uphold the denial under these circumstances.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this? Councilmember Demmer?
This is kind of for people at home, because they don't have the, the specific form, but the specific license application, as Councilmember Carlson said, does say, have you ever, and it has it in bold, and then it says, been convicted, which, you know, is, is obviously something that might be misunderstood, but right under it, it says, failure to document this will be grounds for disqualification. And so this is a situation where if there was like a five-year, you can't reapply again, I would say we would have to think a lot more carefully, but if you can reapply in a week, it seems like the right thing to do is to reapply and, and fill it out in, in full. And so if anyone finds themselves in a situation where they're filling out a form like this, err on the side of filling out more, because they will do a background check, and you'll get denied if you don't fill it out. It's also a great reason to reach out and, and call the, the city clerk and, and try to figure it out, because, you know, obviously, we're not going to deny you for a speeding ticket unless you're going 110 through a school zone, you know. So, anyway, so I. So, anyway, so I think that this is the right approach to deny based on the fact that it doesn't seem very onerous to reapply.
Can I just add one more?
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. You know, I've had to do this many times. You know, I had to do it in three different states when I applied to be a member of the bar and stuff like that. And candor is like the most important thing in doing this. So if there's ever a time when any, and I'm just saying this to the public in general when they're applying for a license with the city, if there's ever a time where, you know, you're looking back and the question is, have you ever? And you're looking back over 30 years, or 40 years, or whatever it is, make your best effort. City staff will work with you. If you omit something that happened in South Dakota when you were 20 years old and you're now 45, and it comes up somehow, we're all going to understand that kind of thing. But it's an expectation that if you're putting down, I have a completely spotless and clean record, that when city staff does its due diligence and checks into it, they're going to find that to be true. I would also note that, you know, I wonder if some of our applications, and I defer to city staff on this and what they want to do, but some of our applications do use the phrase, have you ever been? And I'd be completely fine kind of going back 10 years, 20 years, on some of these minor things, because candidly, a speeding ticket from 20 years ago when you were 18 and you're now 38 is not going to be material to me. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson?
... on that a bit, and looking at it from the other side with me, if you do put something in the application that occurred so long ago that it can't be proven, either way, I think that speaks volumes to your integrity.
Yeah, it bolsters your credibility and integrity. Very good point.
Okay, a lot of lessons for life here tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gascoviac?
Just a clarification. Would the individual be able to, is he going to re-appeal, or will he reapply?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gascoviac will have him reapply and suggest that he completely fill out the application this time.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So there's a fair chance we may not see him again here, then?
There is a fair chance.
We'll see what the learning curve is like. Okay.
Well, if it gets filled out completely and he passes all the checks, you won't see us. We won't see it here.
Recommend you watch this segment. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion has passed to uphold the denial. And we are on to item six, which is to consider resolution 21-1 sub 12, adopting assessments for street reconstruction, project 21-1. And this is 276 single-family homes, 30 townhome properties. And it includes the, this is primarily the area up around Shenandoah, Oaks of Shenandoah. So, does anybody need any presentations on this again? Anybody want to move us forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gascoviac?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 21-1 sub 12, adopting the assessments for project 12-1.
Second.
21-1.
Is that what I said?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that what I said?
Well, you're correcting me?
All right, we have a motion and a second, to adopt resolution number 21-1 sub 12, adopting the assessments for project 21-1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're on to item seven, which is kind of the same thing. Consider resolution 21-2 sub 12, adopting assessments for street reconstruction, project 21-2. And this is all primarily the area down between Coon Rapids Boulevard and the railroad tracks, east of Hanson, and then a little segment north of the tracks and east of Egrit, and then a little section over off of east of Foley, between Coon Rapids Boulevard and Highway 10.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson, thank you.
I'll move adoption of resolution 21-2 per ends 12, close per ends, adopting the assessments for project 21-2.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is planning case 21-9, consider an introduction of an ordinance to change zoning from general commercial to moderate density residential, 114 XX Robinson Drive. And this is the land kind of right behind Wells Fargo there, off Robinson Drive. Mr. Harlecker, did you want to do a presentation? Have you done one on this one?
Sure.
I've read it so many times, it's like I'm drilled into my head, but I can't recall if you presented on it or not.
Excuse me, Mayor and council members, this is a proposed zone change to moderate density residential. The applicant has also applied for a corresponding, changing the land use designation from commercial mixed use to moderate density residential site. Here's off Robinson Drive, the Wells Fargo Bank. Most of the site is tucked in back behind the Wells Fargo site here. Site is 2.63 acres, mostly wooded. There's a small opening up front here along Robinson Drive. Surrounding land uses include townhomes. You've got the bank, church, and a single-family residence just to the east. The applicant is looking at developing this property as a townhome development, should the zone change and corresponding land use plan amendment be approved. At the planning commission meeting, planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and there was one resident that spoke at the public hearing. He was concerned about maintaining some of the trees along this area, the property line here. And so that'll be taken into consideration when they come in for site plan review for the townhouses. And with that, the staff and planning commission recommend the council introduce the proposed ordinance amendment.
Thank you for this. The last time we looked at this lot, they were looking at apartments, and I don't think any of us were terribly impressed with that, so, or many of us were, so. I like this townhome project there. Nice fit.
Your Honor, for question?
Councilmember Demmer?
So, this is a question with no judgment. I just like to know the history. General commercial seems not viable anymore. Is that kind of the deal? Or seems equally viable, or it was never viable? Why is it currently general commercial?
Well, it's, or council member, this has been vacant for a long time. Part of the reason is.
Always.
It's never been developed.
It's never been not vacant. Got it.
And that, one of the issues is its visibility. Most, the bulk of the site isn't visible from Robinson Drive, so it makes it a less desirable site to develop with a commercial office development.
Yeah, it makes sense. I just always like to double-check that we're not changing it because somebody came in, we're changing it because somebody came in and we realize that's what it should be.
Yep.
I would be curious to know how many times they've replaced the for-sale sign out there. It's been for sale that long.
Yeah, exactly. I think it's time to move on to something new.
Clearly, that didn't work. Let's try something else. Anybody else, have any questions of Mr. Harlecker? This is just an introduction tonight, so.
Yeah, I think it's just really to make sure that everyone, we're just introducing, and then at our next meeting is when we would take a vote on the actual ordinance.
Right. Okay, so if there's no other questions for Mr. Harlecker, then we will consider planning case 21-9, which is a proposed, which is an ordinance approving the proposed zone change to moderate density residential based on the following criteria, we'll consider this introduced, and council will take action on it at the next council meeting. And if you have any concerns about this, reach out to staff or reach out to your council member, whoever on the council, and we'd be happy to hear your concerns. All right, so that was eight. And number nine, you're going to just stay right there, aren't you, Mr. Harlecker?
Yep.
We're considering a preliminary and final plat for three residential lots, Eagle Circle Landform Professional Services. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Mayor and council members, this is a proposed single-family residential plat. Access to the property is off of Eagle Circle here. They'll extend the cul-de-sac in and create three lots in this high area here. And this is 105th Eagle Street Drake. City owns the land directly abiding this to the south. It's really surrounded by single-family residential properties. This is the preliminary plat. It's a 7.7 acre lot that would be divided up into three single-family lots. The lots all comply with the dimensional requirements of the LDR2 zoning district, which is what this property is zoned. One of the conditions of staff and the planning commission's recommendation is to extend these lot lines back to the rear property lines and eliminate Outlet A and incorporate it into the rest of the lots, so we just don't have that outlot sitting out there. The bulk of it's wetlands and is not developable. The plat includes extending Eagle Street into the site with a terminating and a cul-de-sac on the property. This is what the grading will look like. You can see where the three house pads will be. There'll be full walkout basements. This area here, the dashed area, is the wetland buffer area, kind of a no disturb area along the edge of the wetland. This is the final plat, again, like the preliminary plat. These lot lines will be extended back to the rear property line. Park dedication is required for the plat, the amount of $6,000. That's $2,000 per lot. At the planning commission meeting held on April 15th, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. Two residents spoke at the public hearing. They were concerned about stormwater runoff, and staff explained that runoff will not be directed onto the adjacent lots. It'll go back and absorb into the rear of the yards and the wetland. And runoff on the front will be directed into the stormwater system and into the city system. A third resident asked about, there was some flags back in here, and typically, those are part of the wetland delineation process. And so that's where the, explained that that was likely where the edge of the wetland was. With that, it's recommended that the council move to approve the preliminary plat and approve resolution 2154, granting final plat approval for Summer Chase, fifth addition, with the seven conditions contained in the staff report.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson?
So I have a question about extending the lot lines all the way to the back to eliminate Outlet A. Will that affect, well, I guess the first question is, is the developer requesting that?
Councilmember, no, it was something that staff recommended, and the applicant was okay with it.
Will that now, or could that in the future, because of the change of the lot size, affect their assessed value for those properties?
I suppose it would depend on what sort of value they place on wetlands. I'm not in a position to answer that.
So my concern is, is that, you know, somebody ends up buying, say, what is it, a lot, I don't know, three? And what they really have effectively is a standard-sized city lot, but what they get is another couple of acres that go along with that, that some assessor down the road attributes some kind of land value to. And then they are frankly unfairly assessed, because basically, we told them they had to take the outlot with it. Now, if that's something that they want and is being requested, then I'm much more open to the concept, but kind of hampering the future marketability of these three lots by tacking on to them part of this outlot is a concern of mine. So, thank you.
So, in my mind, when I look at this, that's not orderly development to just take those property lines and go all the way back across that wetland. Because now, all of a sudden, if you get somebody in Lot 3, and we've had problem neighbors, if they decide they want to keep their trailer over behind any one of those houses on the other side of the wetland, they own it, and you can keep a trailer in your backyard, and that's technically their backyard, I don't like it. I would rather that stay just the way you've got it done, and then have that outlot maybe tied into, you know, we own all the land just south of it. You know, personally, I would love to see the city carve out a lot, pay for half of the, or pay for a portion of the street, and put a lot, you know, sell off a lot there so that it's a complete cul-de-sac, but then take all the wetland and keep it together as, you know, city-owned, or, I mean.
Park.
A park, or wetland, whatever. I don't, I just, I don't think that's orderly development. So I just, I ran through two topics there. Let's stick with one topic.
I was going to bring up the second one, so let's start with yours.
Yeah, no. So the one topic is, I like the development the way it is. I don't like giving those property owners rights to land all the way on the other side of that wetland that maybe the last 15, 20 feet isn't wet, and they could literally store things there, put a shed there.
Well, it actually looks like that, too, when you look at the aerial.
Yeah, and that's what I'm looking at, is aerial. So, that's, I'll be quiet now.
Sorry.
Other than that, I don't feel strongly about it. Other than that, I really like it.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
So I guess I'd kind of like to hear why we are suggesting to go all the way, because, I mean, again, I thought that made more sense as well. And then the second question I'll ask is, the city-owned land to the south of that, could that be a lot? Is it large enough? Is it high enough? Is it dry enough?
Councilmember, there might be room right in here to get one, possibly two lots.
Okay.
Out of that.
And then if the way you've carved up that cul-de-sac can't get you two driveways because of the way that Lot 1 is that weird little triangle, I would want to make sure that we think about that. If there's up, you know, if there's one lot, fine. If there's two lots there, we should fill out that, or consider filling out that cul-de-sac. So that was my concern, is the way that that Lot 1 has such a weird line into the cul-de-sac, it would cut off the ability for somebody else to make a driveway if we sold off the lot south of it.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, and, you know, because the developer is putting in the cul-de-sac on their own property, that's kind of why it's skewed that way.
Yeah.
The build of the lots don't go very far to the south, so even if we only got one, I would just like to have it all maintained up to the curb line, rather than like what you've got right now, where you've got just the woods, which kind of looks like. which kinda looks like, it doesn't look finished at all. I would rather not leave, you know, a quarter, a corner of that undeveloped. But again, different topic.
Yeah. So I guess back to that first question of what, what's the reason we would, we would want to extend the lots all the way to the back versus just leaving the outlot?
Councilmember and Mayor, what happens a lot of times with these outlots is then they go tax forfeit. It's really not usable land, so by extending the property lines out, they becomes the, essentially the responsibility of the property owner to take care of it. And actually with wetlands, there's really not anything you can do with it. You couldn't, for instance, put a, a road across here back to this area here so you could put a shed back there. It's really inaccessible from the developable area of the plat. But that's the, the reasoning behind extending the lot lines out so we don't have these outlots going tax forfeit.
So the developer would have no use for that property at all. Wouldn't they, wouldn't they wanna just revert it back to the city or something? Or revert back to the county or not have to be responsible for it? Their value is in those three lots, I would think.
Correct. They, they could offer that to the city as a, as an option and it would be up to the city to decide if they wanted to accept that land or not.
I guess my challenge is whether, whether it goes tax forfeit because it really has no value, so it really shouldn't be being taxed anyway. Or we tack it onto these lots and then we try as hard as we can not to have people assessed as if they own it because it has no value anyway. Really feels like zero taxes ought to be collected from it. Unless I'm totally misunderstanding something, I, I don't really see the harm in letting it go tax forfeit.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Greskow.
Is, is the applicant land form here? The only reason I ask that is, I, I think I'm with you. It just, it doesn't seem like very orderly development at this pace with outlot lines like that.
Mr. Stemmott, do you have something to?
Mayor, council is just gonna offer, Mr. Hammer has his virtual hand raised and said he had something to provide on the discussion. So at whatever time he feels appropriate for him, he'd like to make a comment.
Well, we could let Mr. Hammer talk right now and then we'll have the developer.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, Mayor, council, that, that may have been a comment either through engineering or maybe part of the discussions with planning. We, we've seen these go tax forfeit quite a bit. I, I think the, the land value, most of the value in a lot goes in the structure itself. I, I didn't see the lot to the south being a city property or whether or not there's even an opportunity there that, it's possible, I guess. But some of the other comments that I heard about storing trailers and other things like that, it, it's a restricted area. It's encumbered by drainage and utility easements, so things of that nature wouldn't be allowed to occur. We, we tend to try to avoid dedicating outlots like this because they tend to go tax forfeit. Then they turn into dumping grounds and gardens and other places where things get stuffed, never to be seen again potentially.
See, and I don't, I think it would do that anyway if we've, if we made these lot lines go all the way across there and they took no ownership and it, I don't think that's gonna change how those lots are treated back there.
Your Honor?
But, Councilmember Demmer.
And I get even more worried if the person who has the house there, they can't get to the other side because it's inaccessible and the person on that other side's throwing stuff over the fence. The homeowner can't clean it and it's technically theirs to clean. And that, that's not cool. Cause you can't get there to clean it up, how can you say you own it?
Yeah. It actually, I mean, I, I think that if, if you're gonna start over with lot, if you're gonna go with lot lines that go all the way across, I think it needs to start over. Because that's not the development we're looking at and that's not the development that came through the planning commission. I mean, I've, I've driven by this a number of times. I've really been studying this and all of a sudden to find out now we wanna go, cut the, cut it up different, it's a different development, I would, I'd need to take a new look at it myself, but. Councilmember Geisler?
You know, I, I hear the, the recommendation from staff to say, extend the property lines. That did not come from the developer. The developer's plat is what's in front of us, the way it looks. And for us, if we wanted to say, you know, leave it as the outlot or potentially, you know, look to say, could that come to the city and then it be attached to the other outlot that we have south of it? You know, that's just taking out recommendation item number two. You know, and to me, that can make sense. I don't, to me, there's no real value with that other wetland area unless for some reason somebody down the road would ever come up with, hey, you can really do development on a wetland and that person could then subdivide their, other half of their lot. But that's likely never gonna happen. So it's just gonna be an outlot. And for it to revert to the city at, whether it comes through tax forfeiture or an agreement with the developer, leaving it as an outlot to me makes sense.
Okay, good way to clean that up, just striking number two.
Just strike number two.
Okay. Does the developer have anything to add to this or anything you wanna clarify or? Otherwise, I, I think we're probably good.
I, I think the question is, are you really excited about, you know, extending the lot lines or if we?
No.
Okay. So if we struck that, you wouldn't feel bad?
Yeah, I'm Todd Olam with Landform Professional Services. We're here on behalf of Thon Builders. And I, as you were discussing it, I was texting Ben Thon just to see if he were available, just to comment on this. I thought he was gonna tap in virtually tonight. But no, we aren't, we aren't, there really isn't a value there to the lot, one way or the other. We submitted this as we typically see them, but understand the comments as well. So whether it stays the way it is right now, we, I guess we'd, we'd rather see it stay the way it is and put it in an outlot and work with the city to, if the city is open to have that dedicated, I, I think the developer is open to that. There is adjacent wetlands to it that the city owns, so it would be contiguous. Make kind of a big preservation area, if you will.
All right.
That's all I have.
Questions of the developer? Take care of what I need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other, or, Mr. Mayor? I don't have any more questions for the developer, but a question for, for the council here maybe. On the southern portion of that where it's a city-owned lot, if the cul-de-sac was aligned a little differently, wouldn't we be creating a buildable lot on the city property that at some point would be worth something?
If, if you look at the topography of, of the whole area, the only way we've got a buildable lot there is if they got that cul-de-sac up a little bit to the north. Because then you've got this circular topography. It's on one of our maps. Or maybe it was on one of the GPS maps. I was looking at a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If you have that, Mr. Harlecker.
I think he's got it, well, he handed it up there for a second.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not fair to them to have them start over, you know, when, when they're ready to go, I think with the three lots. Mr. Stemmott?
Mayor, council too, I think if you push that cul-de-sac further west, yeah, you're gonna impact the lot sizes of the, of the ones being proposed. So I think theoretically, we could create one on our property and then limit the ability to create three lots on their property.
Right.
And to that point, Your Honor, the only thing I was trying to eyeball wasn't moving the cul-de-sack at all. It was whether at some future date, we would be able to buy a very small amount of the land in Lot 1 to make enough room for a driveway. That was the, because that, that long skinny point on Lot 1 is gonna be, it's gonna be a pain to mow anyway. And it kinda precludes a driveway from, you know, unless someone makes a, maybe the scale is better than I think it is.
Well, you, you had the topography there, like two slides ago.
There.
No, yeah, yeah. If you look at the grading plan, you can kinda see how that topography, if you move that cul-de-sac south much, then you kinda lose your building site.
Yeah, my bigger thought was how a driveway comes south out of that and, and makes any sense. And if it got too close to the road, you wouldn't have enough easements and whatever. So it's just sort of a, you know, that little spit on, on Lot 1, whether it was something worth, you know, just mentioning before everything gets built. Cause once it's owned by a homeowner, it's a little different deal, so. Just, just wanted to bring it up in case the city thought we would ever convert that, that maybe they wanna make a deal for 20 feet of land now.
What is left there? Is it about 55 feet? Is that what I see right from that little circle to the corner? Right there?
52, I think.
Whatever, 50 something feet. You know, I don't even know if that's technically enough for a driveway. But if, if I'm the buyer of Lot Number 1, that little point is, is worth it for me not to have a neighbor.
Which is why you do it before they build the house. That was my point.
So I don't know that we're real good developers up here, but at any rate, I, I like the development that's being proposed and I'm willing to support it without the extension of the lot lines.
Okay.
I'm looking at Jenny on this one.
Yep, okay. So you guys ready?
Oh, Councilmember Geisler?
Okay, so here we go. I'll make a motion in planning case 21-10 to approve the preliminary plat and approve Resolution 21-54 granting final plat approval for Summer Chase 5th Edition with the following six conditions. All comments of the city engineer be addressed. Park dedication in the amount of $6,000 be paid prior to the releasing of the plat for recording. One street tree is required for each lot to be planted at the time of building permit. Number four, a developer agreement to be executed between the applicant and the city. Five, the wetland delineation report be approved prior to releasing the final plat. And number six, the Coon Creek Watershed District permit be approved prior to releasing the final plat.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Is there any other discussion on this?
And just for the recording secretary, we just basically eliminated number two.
Right. Okay. Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harlecker.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Just a quick comment on that specific one because someone asked us about it on the way in and said they had a whole bunch of people that were coming in because they weren't, they were concerned that it was gonna build. Hopefully, everybody saw from the drawing, although the drawings aren't always easy to read. It's three houses down in a little corner. It's not developing the entire lot. That, the wetlands will stay wetlands.
Okay. Item 10, there we go, is to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for Trunk Highway 610 Interchange Improvements Project 18-14. Is this why you're here tonight, Mr. Hammer, other than the, all the recognition at the beginning of the meeting?
Well, I had to have all those policemen behind my back this time. It sure was helpful. Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, this is, really, this is a joint powers agreement that talks about the state bonding money that was allocated for the 610 East River Road interchange project. It was given to Anoka County. So this is an agreement between the city and Anoka County. There's a corresponding agreement between MinDOT in Anoka County whereby the funds get passed from MinDOT to the county, to the city. So this is primarily just the funding for the preliminary final design and the environmental documents as the city will be leading this project. So I'm happy to answer any questions. One caveat to this is we will have to pay the money upfront, which we do have funds to do and it's reimbursable. And we will have a small portion that's attributed to Trunk Highways that Anoka County and the city of Coon Rapids will have to split. It will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000. And I would just include that in our 2020 bond, or 2020 budget request, also out of the revolving construction fund likely. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And then your, your last point in the description is this joint powers agreement only covers the design component of the project. A subsequent joint powers agreement will be required for the construction phase when that time occurs and we'll be looking forward to that. So any questions of Mr. Hammer? Okay. Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the execution of the joint power agreement with Anoka County for dispersment of county funds related to preliminary engineering, environmental analysis, and final design of interchange, construction, and associated improvements to County State Aid Highway 1 East River Road at thruway Highway 610.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
And I think maybe TH is maybe Trunk Highway, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Minor change.
That motion carried. And we are on to item 11, related. Consider award of design services contract for the Highway 610 East River Road interchange and consider a master consulting agreement with TKDA. Apparently, we don't have one with them yet, Mr. Hammer, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. They have done work for us in the past. However, it predated our, our master consulting agreement that you all approved back, what's, 2013, 2014, I would say. So as an accompanying item to the last council memo, this is to award a project. We sent out proposals to five different groups, all of which have a lot of letters in their names. There was one actually Kimley Horn, so there wasn't a WSB or an SDH or a TKDA. So we, we only received two responses. We did get two of the, the proposers joined together and that's the group we're recommending approval to you. SRF did a lot of the design work and traffic portion of this project already, leading up to the interchange review committee's approval to, to consider full access here. And TKDA has done the design work on the Foley Railroad Overpass. So between the traffic component and the, the existing project, there's a lot of history here to get us to where we are today. It's a great team. The other proposal was good as well. However, we believe that this is gonna get us the best chance to get us to the finish line. And, you know, some of the critical things within this proposal are up to three open houses, either in person or virtually. We're not settling on exactly the way things are today. We're gonna look at several more options to be considered. We'll take the public input as part of that. And we're hoping to get somewhere around March of next year to get a MinDOT-approved layout so we can again be seeking construction funding through regional solicitation and other things in 2022. So lots, lots of work still to be done in a short period of time. We're happy with the group that we're proposing to you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So this might just be me confused about the process here, but why is this different than our bid process where you give us the three or four highest bidders and, or lowest bidders and we pick the lowest bidder? It seems like a large enough amount and I get the only got two, but it's just the, the format of this looks so different.
Mr. Hammer?
And, Councilmember Demmer, council, this is consulting services and not a construction contract. So there, there's a difference from kind of a low bidding environment. The, the other proposal, I will say, was slightly less, but there's also a lot of time and energy to get that other consultant up to speed as well. So again, I, I think paying a little bit more to having the familiarity and the understanding of what's going on with the project. Maybe, or, Mr. Brody can answer the difference between consulting versus contracting, but this is how we typically handle these. This is the first RFP I've had to do for this dollar amount here. We typically work on smaller scale, but I agree with you that this wasn't one. I wanted to just, you know, throw some names into a hat and pick one out. There was requests and proposals which were evaluated by both city staff, Anoka County, as well as MinDOT staff.
Mr. Brody?
I'm waiting for a legal dissertation.
Tim gave a pretty good explanation. Essentially, in a nutshell, professional service contracts are exempt or not under the competitive bidding law. So when we hired accountant, thankfully, if you guys ever wanted to hire an attorney, those kinds of things, Tim's professional services, you know, Public Works, they're not under. They're required to take solicitations for bid or for proposals and that's what they do. We're not required to take the lowest one. So Tim was just following our normal procedure, our city staff was. And we're not, that, that portion is not under competitive bidding. And so we're not required to go send it out, take the lowest bidder.
That makes sense, especially if you're doing something creative where it's hard to say whose is better. I guess the follow-up is I'm just really surprised you'd send out a request for proposal and only get two architecture firms bidding. I mean, is this a publicly sent out? Or is this a sent out to a select list?
I defer to Mr. Hammer on that one.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim, if you want to answer that.
Sure, Councilmember Demmer, Council. This was kind of the group within our pool, as well as those that have expertise in interchange design. So you're looking for the best of the best. And again, two out of the five combined efforts, so that already limited it. And the other two that did not respond commented that, while they would be good at portions of this, they may not be the best fit and would only be looking to add subconsultants to their proposal.
And that's because it's not like a Northdale and Main Street intersection. This is an interchange with a freeway, I imagine.
I assume there's not a lot of people who do that, but it's just one of those things, just, you know, trying to understand some of the... When do we send it out to the world, and when do we pre-select? Because that's the sort of stuff where people ask you, like, well, how come it's always the same three people? Or whatever. So just figure we got to make sure people understand.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hammer or Mr. Brody? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve the design services agreement with TKDA for the Trunk Highway 610 East River Road interchange and authorize appropriate staff to execute such agreements.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgovia?
Just for my clarification, the funds for this were appropriated in the 2020 legislative session and granted to the city and county, correct? So what is the fiscal note for the city of Coon Rapids on this? It just not cleared me on this. Sorry if that's a question kind of outside the...
No, it's not. Mayor and Council, so what the arrangement is that the city and the county have to request reimbursement. Once the funds are expended, the county will request the funds be reimbursed to them, and they'll pass them on to us. Ultimately, we will be the benefactor of that $1.5 million, except for the portion that cannot be reimbursed. So Tim mentioned that about $70,000, we'd have to put some money in. We'd budget that in the 2022 budget cycle, because there's a portion of this area that is not eligible for these funds. So outside of that, everything would be reimbursed by the state of Minnesota.
Okay, that clarifies. I figured something like that. Just wanted to be clear in my mind before I voted.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And on to item 12, which is to consider acceptance of a water main easement from Menard Incorporated. In February 16th, the public hearing was held, and the city council vacated a water main easement for reconstruction of the outdoor storage and expansion of Menard's Garden Center. The water main pipes and easement had to be reconfigured to accommodate the reconstruction. And as a condition of the planned unit development amendment and site plan, a new water main easement needed to be provided by the property owner, Menards. The property owner has now provided the new easement, and city staff is asking the council to accept it. Does anybody have any questions? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Carlson?
I make a motion that we accept an easement for water main purposes for Menards, located at 3045 Main Street Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Grisgovia. Discussion? It's an awfully big project. It's nice to see that one wrapped up. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And I... We are at the open mic, public comment portion. Nobody in the chambers. Anybody online?
Just double-check there. There is not anybody online.
Okay. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Chief Wise? You can actually... There you go. So maybe you can help our residents understand a little bit what happened in town here and kind of get... It feels like we need to be able to do something to protect our residents from something like that. And that was very... Go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to talk about this. All right, so last week, CARE-11 ran a story about a search warrant being executed in Coon Rapids using the Anoka County SWAT team, and it was the wrong house. Understanding that there are human beings involved, and human beings are capable of making mistakes. However, this is an inexcusable mistake and really hard to comprehend. So to backtrack, the city of Coon Rapids does not operate a SWAT team. We don't use special weapons and tactics to make entries. If such a thing would be necessary, that would be something that we would use the Anoka County Sheriff's Office for. The short version of the story is Minneapolis police were looking for a robbery suspect and identified a Coon Rapids address and went straight to the Anoka County Sheriff's Office to ask for their SWAT team to execute what's called the no-knock warrant, where they basically bashed their way into this residence. And then it was only after they arrived that they figured out that they were in the wrong house. I did not know about this raid in advance. No Coon Rapids police personnel were present. We weren't involved at all. The detective from Minneapolis had invested the case, clearly failed to do his due diligence and figure out exactly where the suspect was. The Anoka County Sheriff's Office inexplicably just accepted Minneapolis's investigation on its face and assisted with the search warrant. That is not my experience in how they operate in our town. Ordinarily, if we do a search warrant in Coon Rapids, meaning we, meaning Coon Rapids Police, and we need the assistance of the Sheriff's Office, we do our due diligence, we prepare a search warrant with an address. Our detectives verify that the person they're looking for resides at that address, because it's a basic requirement. People move. Everybody knows people move. It's not even... I mean, it's to be expected, frankly, that an address that you get that's related, especially to somebody who's involved in a criminal matter like robbery, tends to not be somebody who's well-grounded at a residence. But let's say we do a search warrant in Coon Rapids that's related to a particular address. The Anoka County Sheriff's SWAT team ordinarily does their own independent investigation to verify the address. They've always done it that way. I have no idea why they didn't do that for this particular case. Needless to say, a worse tragedy was avoided, thank God. Secondarily, I hope that all of these agencies are updating their procedures to ensure somehow that that never happens again for them. I don't even know what to say to our poor Coon Rapids resident that was subject to this. They should have never been in that position. And what I've caught from the news, plenty of reporters were looking into it, is that apparently this person's address was not hard to verify. His correct address, the person they were looking for, his correct address was not hard to verify. On its face... Sloppy is probably kind. Sloppy police work, incompetent, I don't know. I don't even know how to describe it. But it can't happen. 2021, that can't happen. So I don't know. I don't know how to explain it to our community.
Is there anything we can do? It seems like we have a responsibility to protect our residents somehow. How did they skip over us? You know, it seems just... It seems like there was a very big omission there in reaching out to us.
I would have expected at least a courtesy notification as the warrant was being executed. Now that said, they're complex, and a lot of people are involved. And the way the process goes, the Minneapolis detective goes to a judge in Anoka County to get a warrant signed, and the judge has jurisdiction over Coon Rapids or this particular geographic area. And the Sheriff's Office has jurisdiction over all of Anoka County. Coon Rapids Incorporated, or by city charter, has a police department, and we provide our own police services. That does not mean, however, that we can exclude the Sheriff's Office from having jurisdiction within our town. We police our town. And that special service that Minneapolis wanted, Coon Rapids doesn't have, so they went to the Sheriff's Office to do it. But we trust the Sher... We, I, CRPD, Coon Rapids City Council, trust the Sheriff's Office to do things the right way. And I'm certain they're reviewing their procedures up there to try to ensure that that doesn't happen again. But it was a horrible, horrible mistake that can't happen.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Johnson?
So I believe that the residence where this was executed is probably in my ward. And it concerns me a great deal. I also have the benefit of the experiences as an assistant county attorney in a neighboring county of approving warrants, reviewing warrants, coordinating with law enforcement to obtain warrants, and frankly, coordinating with that neighboring jurisdiction to sometimes obtain warrants in Anoka County. And there used to be a protocol. I don't know if it was followed here. I don't know if the protocol still exists. Where the Anoka County Attorney's Office, especially if Anoka County was going to be used as an entry force... The Sheriff's Office can be used as an entry force, would submit the proposed search warrant or the application for the search warrant to an assistant Anoka County attorney to review. Part of that is to make sure that the warrant contains the two necessary predicates, that there's probable cause to believe that a crime was committed and that there's probable cause to believe that the thing or person that you're looking for is in the place where you're looking for it. What I would appreciate is that we, you know, do our own due diligence here in Coon Rapids and just request, first of all, that unless there's good cause... And there may be at some point in time good cause to believe that Coon Rapids Police, for some reason, should not be notified about a... The execution of a search warrant, that they would be. You know, if there was good cause not to, I can maybe understand that. But if there wasn't good cause, I think it should just be part of the ordinary protocol. And I'd just like us to relay our expectations along those lines. And I defer to you, Chief, as to how to appropriately address that. But then I'd also like to know whether there was any other review. Or did Minneapolis do what sometimes, frankly, I've had the experience of them doing? Did they just go to a judge in Anoka County and sit down in front of a judge and ask... And I know the judge who signed the warrant in this case. Asked for that judge to sign it without there being any additional review by a local person. Because, you know, our county attorney's office and our sheriff's office, they're accountable to Anoka County and the citizens in this county, just as we are to the constituents that we have in our ward. And I just want to kind of know what happened. Candidly, I'm going to reach out to this constituent and also probably reach out to the sheriff, and I'm sure he's as upset about what happened as what I saw in the news broadcast, and appropriately so. But I think it's... It's a... Thank goodness, nothing bad happened, but it's an opportunity for us all here that interface with the criminal justice system to tighten up our communication and what our expectations are of our partners in justice. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
You know, I concur with a lot of that, and I had sent off notes as well, where I think we need to set the expectation with Anoka County that if they are going to execute something in our city, that we expect notification. Understanding that maybe sometimes it can't be before, but if it can't be before, it should be a very fast follow, that we did this, right? Because obviously, if it's something that needs to be a surprise, you don't want to put it all over the scanners to say, hey, we're going there now, right? But we need to set that expectation. It probably is already there, but just to reiterate that we have to know. And we have to then be able to look to say that one other step of due diligence.
I would frankly, I would just like to hear from the sheriff why this isn't... Why this isn't going to happen again. That's what I'd like to hear, is why it's not going to happen again. What are they going to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that, or are we going to move on to other, other business?
Other, other business.
Thanks, Chief. Other, other business? Mr. Stemwiddles has his hand up.
Mayor, Council, I'm just going to mention one thing. There's actually a vaccination clinic happening here in the civic center end of City Hall this Thursday, May 6, from 2:00 to 5:00. It's being put on by Anoka County Human Services Division. Walk-ins are welcome, although you can pre-register. I just checked. They have 200 vaccinations available that day, and there's still 114 appointments still available. So plenty of time, if you want to register for that, to get in. So the first round is on the 6th, and then about three weeks later, you'd want to reschedule for your follow-up shot, because it is the Pfizer vaccination. So more information right on our front page of our city website, coonrapidsevent.gov.
Very good. Thank you. I know we have one more meeting in between, but I'm just really excited that our summer concert series will be starting out June 3rd down at the Coon Rapids Dam, and we'll remind everybody at our next meeting. Sherwin Linton is kicking us off for our summer concert series. And I don't know, I hope we're all just a go for this summer. Any other business to come before, Council?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.